I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded and I can see that there are no additional recordings happening. If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any citizens comments. Oh, we do.
(Inaudible).
Alright.
Not sure exactly what citizen comments mean, but see if you can...
I think we're about to hear one.
You can cut the mic if you want to. I just want to say thank you. I was here last week. My name is Rafi Vardabedian, Auburn Mass PTO. Just want to thank you, the school committee for getting the word out on some of the events we're doing this week. We had dining fundraisers last night at McDonald's and Coke's tropical ice. They did great. We were just at the 99 earlier tonight. That's still going on. Big crowd there, you know, waits for tables, a lot of people getting takeout. That's great. Tomorrow night is Papagino's, the dining fundraiser for the PTO Patriots opening game. I mean, seems like a no-brainer call. Get pizza, head home, lots of Patriots.
Yeah.
I mean, that works out perfectly. We got bingo on Friday and then our big one, our meeting on Monday. Dr. Brunel's going to speak. So, we've had a lot of great support already this week. I want to thank school committee, the Auburn Mass Daily, just different groups in town for helping get the word out. I would really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Well, we appreciate what you do. Any comments?
I was just going to ask, which school do you hold your meetings at?
All of our meetings, great question, are this year at Swanson Road Intermediate School.
Okay.
6:30, first Monday of every month.
Oh.
Easy to remember.
First Monday.
Other than September, which is the second Monday. Other than that, first Monday of every month.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Stop on by, it'll be fun.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
We now move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our two student representatives this year. I had the opportunity to meet with Jacob and Yaya, actually just yesterday, I suppose. So, if I may, I'd like to just turn it over to each of them to introduce themselves. So, we'll go ladies before gentlemen and start with Yaya.
Hello, I am Ya of Opuku Ajimai. I currently attend Auburn High School. I am a senior. I participate mostly in sports and academic clubs such as Model UN International Club. For sports, I participate in indoor track as well as tennis. Off-season, I'm mostly swimming or just helping out, volunteering, anti-trust wise. And that's me.
Excellent.
Thank you.
My name's Jacob Turcot. I'm a junior at Auburn High School this year. On my free time, I'm either volunteering or working and I tend to be as active as I possibly can.
Excellent. Well, we welcome you aboard and appreciate you stepping up. So, are there any questions or comments from the board?
I look forward to having you guys.
Yes, thank you for doing this.
I would like to say welcome and thank you for doing this because it gives us sometimes, it gives us the feedback that we don't normally get and to have you being part of the school itself, it really makes a difference and I want to thank you for doing it.
Just a couple of quick questions, actually one for each of you. We'll start with Yaya. What made you decide to step up and be the student representative?
After I graduate from Auburn High School, I plan on majoring in international relations and comparative politics. So, a great way to get my feet on a platform is to work with my local town. I was going to work with Worcester, but then Worcester doesn't have any openings and then Auburn is closer and I feel like I would be able to more represent the student body here than at Worcester.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, I was presented with the opportunity by one of my teachers, Mr. Vincent Bonaccio, and at the time it seemed like a really good idea and it does now as well. And so, we had the conversation with Ms. Brunel yesterday and the idea just was a no-brainer to me.
Excellent. I think you guys are going to do a fantastic job. You're already off to an unbelievable start. Very well spoken and I think you're representing your fellow students very well. So, thank you and welcome aboard.
I do, if I can, just they're both being very humble. We talked about the AP classes that they're involved in and the rigorous course load and whether it's volunteering activities and things. So, they're very busy individuals, but I think they're going to be a great addition. So, very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we need approval of the minutes from last week?
We didn't prepare them, so they'll be for the next one.
Okay.
Yep.
So, moving on to the super penance report.
Thank you. First item, I just wanted to share with you just a very generous offer that came really out of the blue for us. Mrs. Karen Higgins lives in Auburn and she had collected over the years as a teacher herself in another district, a number of books for elementary and middle school aged children. I sent the email out and they were picked up in very quick order, but wanted to make you aware of it because it was just a wonderful donation that will now be in our kids' hands and even some for teachers and things too. So, it is my recommendation that you accept these and we will send along a thanks to her.
Would entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
That's seconded.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Chris, you're going to say thank you, you're going to send a letter anyway.
Right.
Definitely, yes.
That's wonderful.
Wonderful, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
The next item, I thought this was really just such a great, it's been something that's been in the discussion phase for a number of years. Each year, for each season and for each sport, they select captains and we've never really provided any real training for them. And in being a captain, just as we see with Ya and Jacob, really takes leadership skills and some poise and being able to build relationships. So, Mr. Davis, our new athletic director coordinated a captain's leadership workshop. I did share with you an article recently through the Auburn Mass Daily. It was very well received and really to lift these individuals up who are in leadership's roles, to help lift their peers up to do it. So, I think it really speaks highly to Mr. Davis and the work that he's embarking on in this role and I think it'll be great for our kids and not only will the leaders benefit, but I think all of the team members will too. So, I thought it was great.
Excellent. Any comments?
No, it just seemed like an awesome opportunity for the students to listen to these people too.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I think a lot of times when people have chosen to be captain, they think it's just to bark out orders and they think that it ends on the field, but really that's not the case because they've got to be representative of their team.
Exactly.
I think it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the Auburn Youth Football and Cheer. As you'll remember, last week, Mr. Standard was here and gave a great update about their high levels of participation. They had their opener on Saturday and as set by the building fee schedule, the rental schedule, they rented the press box for $10 an hour. Mr. Standard had all of his own equipment, but he is here this evening, I believe, to request a waiver of that. So, with your permission, I will turn it over to Mr. Standard. I did provide lots of supporting documentation that may help you in your discussions on this.
Excellent. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. First of all, I just want to say we're two days in, new schools, new buses, new routes and although it may seem like everybody on Facebook has the answers, you guys are doing a great job. And I personally appreciate my children being safe in a learning environment. So, thank you very much for everything you guys have done. It is an immense task and not everybody realizes that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, last week I kind of told you what we do in Auburn football and what was really cool, I thought, when I left was there was an article done in the Telegram Gazette about high school football preview. And I don't know if anybody read it, but one of the things they talk about is how Auburn High School, basically you can argue has been one of the most consistent programs in central Massachusetts. But they're up against something this year because usually for every graduating superstar, they've got somebody as talented if not more to take the place. And what Coach Corvair called that was not necessarily rebuilding, it was reloading from the pipeline, as he called it. And to quote him, what he said is this season's one of those rare times in Auburn where he doesn't know if we have that kid. In the past years, kind of knew the kids that were in the pipeline and that they don't know that now and that's what we're trying to do, is fill that pipeline. These, we brought some in here, these fourth, third graders, second graders, they're filling that pipeline and we're hoping that as they get to play with each other, know each other, that provides better players for the high school in the future. So, I think one of the reasons this came about was my lack of knowledge on how to get things done. And one of the things that helped was talking with Dr. Brunel and I apologize because I was in the middle of getting ready to start school. So, we, our big thing, did anybody make it to a game Saturday? No. It's okay if you didn't. Did you, did you see our games?
Yeah.
Oh, your sister's cheerleader, right? So, what did you think of the atmosphere? Was it?
It's pretty homely and awesome to be at.
Okay. So, one of the things we feel is the announcing. Did you recognize the voice that was announcing?
Yeah.
That was my voice. We think that really helps with the kids, play the music, the same stuff they hear at Gillette. We try to, I've had moms and grandmothers come and tell me, I like the game so much more, I understand what's going on, because I try to give them, it's first down, second down, we have this going on and it really tries to bring everybody into the game. As Dr. Brunel mentioned, we wanted to use the press box. I have no intention of using Auburn's sound system. That's their sound system, that's a great sound system. I have my own. My brother-in-law works for Bose. I personally, as you've seen from that work, building TV trucks right here, the leading manufacturer TV trucks is right here in Auburn in your backyard. Most of you didn't know that. So, I have access to a lot of that material. So, as for equipment, we're good to go. I like having the booth to have it safe and secure inside. If it rains out, we're good. The other thing we'd like to do is we'd like to use a scoreboard and I think that's the bigger problem. And again, I know you all have the email, I think, where I laid it out, but I'll run through it. It's a simple controller that plugs in, communicates with the scoreboard so we can keep time and score. Big things, time is real big for the smaller games, keep taking the score. Parents are getting to it just as much as kids, want to see that score up there, those touchdowns. We called Daytronics, the manufacturer, because the concern was what if we break it? We got a game on Friday night, if we break it on Saturday, how are we going to turn that? So, we wanted to buy our own, like we'll buy our own. So, they were able to tap into your scoreboard from Iowa or Ohio, wherever it is, and they said, well, they have the Allsport 5000, that is no longer made. So, you would have to buy the Allsport 6000. Okay, well then we'd have to upgrade the scoreboard so your 6000 would work. Once we did that, your Auburn High School's 5000 wouldn't work. Okay, we can't do that, it's way too expensive to buy everybody new controllers. And we got to down to what if we broke the Allsport 5000? He goes, we can swap it out, we can refurbish it, it's 24 hours from the time we get it till we ship it back out. So, with us playing three home games and we are hoping to do a regional playoff in November, where all 16 different teams will come here and play here, the people love our facilities, it's a big moneymaker for Auburn Youth. So, that's, it's three home games plus that game, we would like to be able to use the controller. In talking with Dr. Brunel, there's a concern about, I think, and I don't want to step over my bounds, I think I'm qualified to operate the controller. And I think, I think most people agree with that. I am willing and I think it's a great idea to have training with, it was Jason Bergman, who's at the head of AV department, who I kind of have some familiarity with from events I've done in high school next to him, to get training to say, he goes, yeah, Chris, you are good to go, you can use this. And I want to be the person responsible for that. I understand the responsibility goes with that. I want my children to attend Auburn High School at some point and get to use that type of stuff. So, it's not something I look at lightly. It's not a, it's not a big party, it's not let's go have a good time. And the fees, I think, and again, this is, I'm still trying to catch up on this, I think the fee for that is $25 an hour, correct?
Correct.
So, our game days are eight hours long. That's, that's a pretty big expense for us. And I'm not trying to be special, I'm asking with the training, with the background you know of me, would we be able to waive the fees to be able to use those things as long as we continue to use it in good faith? I will tell you that I have pictures before and after of the booth. I am positive it's cleaner after than before, not that it was a mess when it was before. And I will tell you, the one strange thing is I thought it was dirt clods all over the floor and as I swept it up, it was dead flies. So, I don't know if that's from over this winter, it got stuck in there, there was a lot.
Ew.
And it was unlocked when we got there in the morning. I went and I said, oh, he's already opened it up and then he came walking up behind me and he goes, was that open? And I go, yeah. So, it was unlocked. It was locked when I left. We took good care of it. I will tell you, my wife came in at one time during, my son after his game in, I did have people come in who sat there and watched the game. My father-in-law, who I believe both Mr. Chair and Dr. Brunel are familiar with, really enjoyed, he loved every time, he go, I love Auburn's facilities, he loves it. So, I'm not saying nobody goes in there, but we control who goes in there and it's not a party. And that's, that's what I'm asking of you, if it's appropriate to ask that.
Absolutely, and that was a great presentation. Very well done.
I apologize, I wanted to have video of some of what went on. It's great that you saw it and you said it was a good time, so thank you very much. That's awesome.
She just, she didn't want to hear you say that, Chris, that's awesome.
So, should we wait until next time?
You need to, it's going to be even better. I'm telling you, Saturday, we're going to be under the lights for the last game. And that's, it's going to be, it's crazy, it's fun. It's, we get people into it.
Good, yep. I don't have a problem with it.
Would you like to lay this out for the committee as far as just some of the, I think Chris touched on a lot of it, but just some of the background as to how we came to these policies and then I think Chris even addressed what our concern was with the damaged scoreboard, even though we don't think that he's going to damage it.
Right.
We are accountable to the Auburn High School players and the rest of the town, so that's the reason why we are so thorough.
As it should be.
So, starting back from 2006 when the school first opened, the school committee and it's gone through, obviously a number of school committees at the time, have set rates and the goal was always, and I did include the policy in here, the goal is always for schools to be able to use it first, for Auburn nonprofit groups and then for if there are any profit, for-profit groups, whether they're in Auburn or outside. The idea being that we would generate some funds to replace equipment or to cover costs of time put in. Mr. Standard, I think, in when I spoke with him and again this evening, really laid out the big concerns. I mean, one, we need to ensure, just as we do with the sound system in the auditorium, that that in particular is very sophisticated equipment, we want to make sure that someone is well-trained and able to do it. So, that way, when we have a town meeting, when we have a play, that everything is up and running. In terms of what Mr. Standard has laid out, I mean, he clearly has experience with this, that he has his own equipment and whatnot and used all of his own this weekend and not the scoreboard. I think so long as the committee, what I think is really important is we want to make sure that as we set precedents, that we make sure that we're consistent in that. So, that way, should anybody else come forward, whether it's to use this, I personally would not recommend we ever waive the fee for the sound system, it's just far too intricate. But what they're looking to use is the scoreboard. I think that so long as there is a training with Mr. Bergman, as I understand it, they're looking for three home games and potentially a district playoff game that would be there as well. It's a great opportunity for our young children to learn the game of football, but teamwork, the camaraderie, the family atmosphere that it sounds has been described. So, I think as long as those things are in place and then that he went to above and beyond to say, because the big concern is in speaking with the athletic director, we need to have a scoreboard, functional, for a Friday night football game because, I mean, that they have to be able to project the score. But clearly he has gone and checked with Daytronics and to find that out and it appears that they could turn it around, you know, within 48 hours.
Sorry to interrupt, they can't give us a quote because we haven't given them something that's broken to know, well, that's what we need to swap out.
Yep.
So, I don't have a quote to give you because there really isn't one at this point, but they were very helpful, very, very understanding of what we were looking to do.
Sure.
Can I add a question about that? So, if it were to get broken with Auburn football?
That's all on us, if we break it.
Yeah.
Yep.
And if I could ask, our high school uses it Friday nights, so that's definitely when the scoreboard needs to be in perfect order.
Right.
And you'd be using it on Saturdays?
Saturdays, yes, ma'am.
So, if something happened on a Saturday, that would give us a whole week to get it repaired?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the other issue in terms of this, I just share some feedback and I would not make a recommendation lightly to completely waive the fee, but I think that, you know, we need to make sure that all of the bases are covered in case something were to happen. In the past, the school committees in the past have sometimes reduced a fee and they have also waived the fee or the necessity to have a site manager on at that time. So, there's certainly precedent for it, but I think so long as the training is there, and Mr. Bergman would be great and just go over things with him and the replacement, I think for four games, my recommendation would be that you approve this, the waiving of this fee for these four games and we monitor it and then bring back a report to you of how things went.
Based on, based on the great things that the organization is doing, I would have no problem with this. It's, as they mentioned, it's not only a great, great thing for the children now who are playing football, but also it is a feeder program for our high school. It all ties in and it's not a situation where we have to worry about, you know, 20% of the kids may be from this town to that town, it's Auburn. So, I really can't see a problem with waiving that fee.
Just so complete transparency, I believe we have two Worcester players.
Alright, forget it then.
Out of 130, we have, I believe we have two that are from Worcester.
No, that's, I would definitely, definitely support that and I'm quite confident in your vast knowledge of the sound system and the scoreboard and not that using the sound system, but in bringing that up and then, and I think the idea of meeting, meeting with Mr. Bergman is just so that the next person who comes in here doesn't come in and say, I've got all kinds of experience with electronics and blow the whole thing up and we'll say,
I completely understand.
Well, you know what, you need to be trained on it. Just, that's, that's the precedent that we didn't want to set here, but otherwise I really don't feel like there's any roadblocks and I never really did when this conversation came started, so.
Would permission be that Mr. Standard is the one that uses it and not anybody else?
That would be my recommendation. He would be the individual trade.
So, let me ask this question. So, when you have a high school football game, it's actually a referee that operates that scoreboard under the supervision of whoever's else, whoever from the school's there. It's a referee that has to run the time, correct? Because it's the same for us. It's a referee that has to run, has to sit there and run the time, we have the schedule. Now, I'm there with him at all times, but I believe that's, that's the way it is, it's the same for high school as it is for us.
Okay, okay.
Do you operate the site managers?
Under his direction.
Right, I'm in the booth and believe me, they, everybody on the board left me alone up there and nature called and I sat up there and waited and waited and waited. So, I was up there there.
You know, the flies?
Between the flies and the nature comments, you're really keeping us surprised here. This is great. Don't leave out any details, Mr. Standard. Okay.
Just one other thing I was just going to say, I noticed that you put in the chorey procedures, this is just the expectation that all of your volunteers would be chorey checked.
We have to be chorey checked to be doing what we're doing, to be a coach or slash demonstrator helper at the league.
I just like that you put it in your proposal.
No, this, this is not my proposal. This is, and this would be one of my recommendations, this is one of your guys', I couldn't find anything. So, as somebody being new, and I understand how good a lot of times it's tribal knowledge, we've done this for 20 years, everybody knows, I was, I was, I didn't know where to get it and I apologize for pester new for it, but.
Well, that's okay.
I would go, I went to the school committee section on the website and I thought might be there be documents. So, just as a suggestion, maybe getting some of this stuff, a little more accessible to people.
Yeah.
I felt bad, seriously, it was, you know, three days before school started and I'm talking to Dr. Brunel about, I really want to use your press box. I felt bad.
No, no worries.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Are we waiving the fee for the press box and the scoreboard?
That's what I'm hoping for. Yes, ma'am.
Alright, so, I just want to make sure. And then, alright, oh shoot, I just lost my other question. Alright, someone go maybe a little bit in second.
Well, we could, we could actually draw up that motion right now and then if there are any other comments, we could do that after we have a second.
Correct.
So, give you time to think about that.
And again, I apologize, we're in the middle of the season. Wrong time to be doing this. Again, my learning curve, I kind of got up to speed slowly. This is something that probably should have been done two months ago and will be taken care of in the future ahead of time now that opulcs and procedures in place on our end so that we know, well, these are things we got to check off our list as we come up with parents.
Well, you've got a few games left and as you said, the playoffs, it'll be huge for the playoffs, it'll make it so much more exciting.
It will be. A lot of the visiting parents really enjoyed their time Saturday. It makes a difference.
Absolutely. So, the motion would be to waive the scoreboard and use of the.
Press box.
So, the rental and use of the equipment, the scoreboard equipment.
Scoreboard equipment.
In the press box, so long as Mr. Standard is there, is trained, will serve as the supervisor of anyone there, it would only be one other individual, perhaps the referee.
Referee, yeah.
In with the understanding that should any damage come to it, Auburn Youth Football and Cheer would be responsible for the full replacement and to ensure that it is up and running for our football games.
And is this just for one year?
This would be just for these potential four games.
Oh.
I'll make that motion to approve what the superintendent had just made.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Maybe just answer the question I have.
This is interesting, I thought you had more questions.
No, it was already answered, I just wanted to make sure this was like a case by case.
Case by case, definitely.
No, I'm not mad.
Yeah, okay. Yes, yes, very important.
Well, obviously, if things go well, then it's something we would support in the future, again, given how many of our children are involved.
One thing I forgot to put in the mail was I did use the basketball school three times during the season. Did not, that one's kind of cheap, right?
Well, I think that the press box thing covers the cleaning费. Yeah, right, exactly. Yeah.
Alright, so, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion and we can.
We did.
I made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would.
Alright. You second.
Daddy seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for the time and for the approval, we appreciate it and I hope to see some of you Saturday evening.
Thank you.
What are the dates of upcoming games?
Can I just break this down? Do you have the dates?
This Saturday, so it's September 12th and then October 3rd and then the third game up here towards the end of season, it's not a full slate, it's only 24th of October.
Starting at what time?
We start at this Saturday, next Saturday, we start at 2 o'clock for Flag, 3:30 for Mighty Mike, Tiny Mike and then the competitive games, 5:15 for fourth grade and 7 o'clock and seven o'clock for the sixth grade.
Chris, would you like to have the guys come up and, and say hello and wave to us before they, they take off?
Say hello?
Come on, it's a.
Yeah, make a team, you know what team you guys are on?
You don't, you don't have to go behind there, let's just.
Just stand right there.
One at a time, right there. Okay, Rocco, go first.
My name is Rocco, and I play for the fourth grade team, Auburn Rockets.
Great.
My name is Grant, and I play for the two. Jackie, I'm so glad to talk to you. My name is Grant, and I play for the fourth grade.
All you can say is go Rockets.
Good luck, oh, good luck, guys, go get them. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Hey, great letter, by the way.
I didn't, it was, again, father and Dr. Brunel, nothing for harrowing than writing a superintendent's word.
You gotta spell it right, you know.
We now move on to unfinished business.
Just a reminder, we've got the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee. I am gathering some information, which I will email and share with you in advance before anything goes out. But one piece of information, and we should have this hard data tomorrow by Friday, is the increase in number of students that we've seen this year across our schools. They have been spread out, I've monitored class sizes, we're in very good shape, we're below the twenty-five at all levels. But last count, we were up at least fifty students across the district. So we're gonna need to keep that in mind, because as we plan forward for budgeting, obviously, that may require, you know, more textbooks in some areas and things. In May, although it doesn't appear right now, could require additional staff. It would also mean that we would get additional Chapter Seventy money coming in for that. So we just need to, you know, as one of the discussion items next week is about the FY seventeen budget. More students, more Chapter Seventy money in, so we just need to keep that in mind as we go forward. The other thing, Mr. Fahy and I will be having conversations with Town Manager Jacobson and CFO Kazanovich on Friday. Just preliminary discussions about, once the vote is taken by the school committee, to return J.B. and Mary D. to the town. So we're looking at, you know, notifying them exactly what is left in those buildings or what is not in there. They're looking to reduce the cost of any insurance charges against those buildings. But in all likelihood, on or about September twenty-third, we'll probably be recommending that you deem them surplus and that they go back to the town. So I just want to keep you apprised. So anything that we're gonna pass out that night, or I would pass out, you'll have it in advance so that you can review it, and you can ask me questions if you have any, but.
Dr. Brunel, I missed that question. Are all our school choice slots filled?
They are, with waiting lists still remaining, they're all filled, yes, yeah.
Any other comments? Moving on to the budget.
Believe it or not, we've just begun the fifteen, sixteen school year, but we will soon, as evidenced by this budget timeline, be working in earnest on the FY seventeen budget. In fact, all of the members of the leadership team need to have to Mr. and Mrs. Worsbicky and myself, their draft budget by October sixteenth, which is just, you know, five weeks away. So it's a daunting task to start to look ahead that far when we've only just begun this year. But, but as all of you have been on the committee now for over a year, and our leadership team has, has been in place, they're, they're well versed in this. So we anticipate bringing to you the first draft of the budget. It's generally right when we come back from the MASC, MASs conference. So I think it, it shows that Tuesday, November seventeenth. So in just over two short months, we'll start talking about the following year's budget. So just wanted to share this with you, and the goal, obviously, is to be sure that we comply with the bylaw expectation and get it to the Town Manager by January twelfth of two thousand sixteen.
Any comments? As far as prioritizing and some of the, the board's concerns, would it be appropriate to maybe shoot you an email here or there of some priorities, and that way you could list them, and then we may be able to kind of consolidate and talk about them at, at the future meetings?
Absolutely.
If, if we just kept a running tally outside of our actual meetings, and something that we could look at, and you could even, if, when it gets to be half dozen of them, ideas or concerns for prioritizing, you could send them out to us, and if you listen, and think about well before even the meeting minutes come out for.
Sure, I do have also, based on a request at last month's, last week's meeting, is the listing of items that we needed, or that you needed to reduce. So that will be in the next packet for you to see. So all of the things that we weren't able to fund, and then if you have ideas, send them to me, and I can put them on the agenda for the twenty-third, and we can start talking about it. It'd be great direction for the, for the principals to have leadership team.
That would certainly be a part of our point where, where we left off last year, kind of a benchmark as to where we want to build from with, with those items, especially the guidance piece that we spoke, spoke about. I would say, length back and forth, so absolutely.
I might be on making you for that boat either.
There you go. So, and, so again, feel free to shoot out an email, and, and Dr. Brunel can kind of tally them up and get that info to us. That way, a lot, a lot of us, a lot, a lot of the priorities, we may, it may be common, so. Rather than going back and forth, send it all to one place, and we'll figure it out. Thank you.
The School Building Committee has not met since we met last week. Our next meeting is on September twenty-second. We did have our, our weekly post-construction meeting this morning, and the items, they call it a back punch list that LPA is going through, very, very minimal, and they're being addressed. So they'll be reported to SBC on the twenty-second. And for all who have been in the school, it's just been an incredibly positive reaction from everybody. So it's really, really wonderful. Master Plan Team, we don't yet have a meeting date scheduled, but I anticipate we'll take a tour of Swanson Road. And I will tell you too, I've gotten an awful lot of positive feedback from families who took advantage of that and went in for the tour and noticed the difference in it and stuff. So there's more work to be done, but it, it really has, has been nice, it's really been nice. And I did share with you, the LPN did actually start yesterday, she wasn't able to come in until noon. Met her, Deb Malin, she's just a, I think she would be a tremendous fit, she has a really warm personality. I think she and Mrs. Elsa, you would be a great team, great team.
Any comments?
Yeah, I have a comment, actually. After going on the tour and seeing all the changes, it's impressive what Joe Fahy has pulled out of his hat, actually. I, I know my daughter feels right at home there, it's a big school, but she knew that going into it, and I think the kids are acclimating nicely. And I have to say that Pakachog has also made leaps and bounds, and that's, the custodians have stepped up to really clean the school, and they're all, it's a team effort, the teachers have come together, so it's nice to see. And make sure you pass along the bags.
I definitely will, thank you very much.
And you gentlemen, have any comments about your new school? Good, okay, that's one good. Good enough. Rocco, do you have any?
Big and good.
Big and good. We have a good and we have a big and good. Excellent.
How's the lunchroom working out? Is that, that's good?
Yeah, yeah.
Lots, lots of new friends. Excellent, very well said. Thanks, guys, thanks for your comments. We now move on to new business, and I think Wayne has something right off the bat.
I'm, I'm just gonna talk about the busing situation a little bit. I got many, many phone calls about the busing. I think we might have dropped the ball on this, but I could be wrong. But a lot of the parents were very upset because they were sitting in buses in heat the other day for twenty minutes and a half, an hour before the bus even moved. And a lot of drop-offs at, at night, in the afternoon, didn't get to their houses like an hour than what the drop-off was supposed to be, late. And then I had an issue with, kids were so hot and stuff when they got off the bus that they were sitting there crying, literally crying, and very upset, and that's not good. And then I had a couple of incidents that there was four children to a seat when, by state law, it's supposed to be three, I believe, and that we have kids that are sitting on kids' laps on the bus, and that people, kids are standing up in like the middle of the bus, holding on to poles. I'm not, this is a concern from parents that got a hold of me. I don't know that factually, I haven't seen it, but I know it's not coming from one person, it's coming from quite a few. And I kind of explained that, you know, this is the beginning of the school year, but I even told them I was not comfortable with the situations they were telling me. And, and if that's true, we need to take care of it. Not only the bus routes going by people and not picking them up, but I mean, safety issues. If we got kids sitting on each other, or four kids sitting in a, a bus, and they get in an accident, the kid goes flying, something happened to that kid, that's gonna be on us. Or bus station, whoever it's gonna be on, it's gonna be on somebody. We don't want to go there. We don't want to go there at all, these are our kids. We're gonna protect them in every way. If we need to do something to get money, to relieve some of these problems, we need to do it, because these are our students. And I'd rather see us taking care of our student, students than, than other things in our, in the contracts and stuff like that. We need to protect our children. And like I said, I got many, many, many complaints. So, and a lot of them I asked, let's see, give us a couple of days and see what happens. But I wanted it to be brought up here tonight, so they know that it's been brought up, and it, and I'll let you finish it, because I know you're gonna have something to say about it, and that's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Could I just, for, for, for a moment? Did you receive any calls? And I'm not saying that your sources aren't accurate. Did you receive any calls pertaining, no, pertaining to overloading of the bus? Four people to a seat, or kids standing?
No, I have not received any of those calls, and I don't believe anybody in the office has received a call to them, to them.
We got two committee members out there.
I was just talking to my neighbors in general this afternoon, and I happened to ask them how they liked Swanson Road, and the kids loved it, and then they said, but the buses, there's four in a seat. This is just third and fifth graders telling me, there's four in a seat, and some kids are standing in, in the aisles, and some kids were holding up signs because we didn't pick them up, and the sign said, Bus Ele, Bus Eleven, stop here, please! And we went, they said they went, the children said they went by four bus stops like that. So, I just, this is children talking, but obviously, they're the ones riding the buses, so.
There's, there's no, there's no excuse for that, there's no, there's no excuse for missing stops. But right now, I'm just trying to get to the, the bottom of the, how is it possible for a bus to be overcrowded? There's a certain number of students that get onto each bus, and that would be, that would be my concern. Not that any, all that other stuff, the, the sitting on the bus and the heat, that's, that's terrible, that's gotta be worked out. All, all of these items have to be worked out. But to me, I just couldn't, I can't believe that the numbers on paper and the numbers on the bus didn't, didn't align. That's just a.
Could it actually just be a case of the kids, because I know the kids are directed to a section per grade, have a lot of little followers, so could it be just maybe it's a, a case of the monitor, the bus driver themselves kind of already shuffling them when it was a hectic day? I don't know, but I mean, I think maybe it's worth just talking to the bus drivers, if they add another row for the fifth grader or something like that, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I have some issues.
All right, Dr. Brunel, would you care to speak?
Do you want me to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you had something?
I take the bus, but another issue is that some buses, multiple buses go down my street, so some kids don't know which bus to take. So although some stop, another issue could be that the numbers aren't visible, because Bus Three and Four and Seven go around my area, so some kids get off, get on on the wrong bus. So that could be another issue.
Okay.
As to why it's overcrowded.
That certainly is an issue of people getting on the wrong bus. It's going to the same place, so they're getting there, but.
That's a good point.
The other one I heard too, and these are coming from many parents, it's not one person, I just want to get that clarified. But bus passes, they haven't, you having problems with bus passes? They're saying they don't have passes, and nobody's checking the passes, and.
Yeah, nobody checks the passes.
Yeah, so.
I have mine, and nobody checked it, so.
Nobody's checking them, or something, they're not even asking for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good luck.
So sure, uh.
Well, you know, it's just something that needs to be looked at, and we can get it cleared up in a couple of days, and here we go.
So I will start off by saying that I, like you, and I think all of us here, the safety of our kids is, is the utmost priority. So, so that, that's a shared commitment that we all have. The buses, and I think I had shared this too, we had over a hundred families come in to register for buses in the last two weeks of August. That we, we caused us to add an additional bus. As you know, at every school committee meeting, we talk about the, the bus deadline was April first this year. We had some new families registered, but we had some families that had not, for whatever reason, maybe they, they decided late. So we added an eleventh bus to it. I think too, and, and I, I'm making no, no excuses on this, my, I think my voice message that I sent out last night was very clear, it's not acceptable. And, and what I was most disappointed in is the incredible amount of planning that went into this reconfiguration that included bus runs, that went back to April, that we went out at six in the morning. What we couldn't simulate was, what do we do when we have a hundred thirty buses queue up in the Auburn Middle School and we can't get buses through? When I looked out here, and it was at a dead, a hundred thirty cars, what did I say?
Buses.
Oh, no, sorry, a hundred thirty cars.
That would solve the problem.
Well, it was a hundred thirty students, we didn't, but I mean, most kids, one child got into one car, and then to the next. When I looked out here and saw that West Street was at a complete stop, I immediately went out there and said, we've got a problem. They were backed out onto Route Twelve. So what we did in response to that, and, and that delay of twenty-five minutes then caused the delay at Swanson that Domino went to Pakachog. It really didn't impact Bryn Mawr School. Now, I will say this, at the beginning of every school year, in a school year where we haven't done a massive reconfiguration, where we haven't opened a new school, where we haven't closed two schools, where we haven't combined two schools, every year, there are challenges at the start of the year. I wish there were none, I'd like it to be perfect on day one, because I want our students, I'd prefer they know exactly what route they're going on, when they're gonna get home, but it takes a little bit of time for a routine to develop, and that is going to happen. But having said all of that, we then met last night and said, this is not acceptable, what are we gonna do and change? So we put in place some measures, have our parent pickups actually come after the buses, so that way they're not, not, not impeding the buses from getting up. That's what happened here, and that's also what happened to Pakachog. It didn't happen at Swanson Road yesterday, in large part because the police basically stopped traffic and said, no, you can't go in, you need to, we need to keep this road open. By the time the logjam happened here, it was almost impossible. What we did is we doubled up cars and ended up having it work. The measures that we put in place, that we discussed last night, put in place today, had a marked improvement, a marked improvement. I was at Auburn Middle School, then Swanson Road, then up at Pakachog, and things flowed extremely smoothly in terms of buses, parent pickup, there's, there's still an awful lot of parents. And, and I think that system needs to be refined, and we're gonna meet with the school resource officer later this week to do that. Visible numbers on the buses, I think that they do have numbers, I think they could be more visible, I, I absolutely agree with that. In terms of four kids to a seat, I've not, this is the first thing I'm hearing about it, or kids standing up. That's generally something that I would get calls about. But having heard it now, we will look into it with the bus company. We regularly request from them how many students are riding. In fact, the, the bus drivers keep track of that, because there has been some shifting. Just today, we moved a stop off of Bus Eleven to put onto Bus Nine. Parents are phoned, they're notified of that, and bus passes will go back out to them. So, you know, it has been a challenging start to the year, but it's been compounded because of the reconfiguration. And that's not an excuse, because we planned well, and I was disappointed in how it went off yesterday. I want things to go off perfectly, and we planned, and it should have been that way, but we didn't account for some things. But in terms of, you know, kids being hot on the bus, you know, yesterday, when they were going up to Pakachog, it was at a dead standstill, the buses couldn't get through, so they were sitting on the bus for, for a period of time, and it shouldn't have been that way. Today, that didn't happen, we rerouted them, and I think Mrs. Hamilton, you were there. By the time I got up there, three of the buses, uh, four of the buses, I'm sorry, had already pulled out. There was one waiting there loading, and one was coming up behind me on Jerome. So the, the steps that we've taken, we've got another measure to take tomorrow. I think tomorrow, things will go far more smoothly. I think by Tuesday, and usually at any given year, it takes about a week to ten days, eight to ten days, before all the routines are established, kids are at the stop at the right time. And, and, you know, if any bus was overcrowded, I know that we did have, unfortunately, we had a sub-bus driver on one of our buses, and all of them drove the bus. Some of them did this weekend, but all works started to do the run. We put in place Mrs. Perno from AA, she was on the bus, drove with them this morning to make sure that things ran more smoothly. And if stops were missed, and they were, and that's not acceptable, other buses went and picked them up. So I think there was some confusion, you know, with that. But always at the start of the year, we never check bus passes. And we say that to parents, we put that out to them and said, we won't check bus passes because we're not gonna deny any child waiting on a bus, waiting at a stop to get to school. Come next week, you have to have a pass, and it's gonna be the correct one.
So for going home, excuse me, Wayne?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Does someone have a list of who's supposed to get on each bus, so that, I mean, if you're not checking bus passes, is someone making sure a child is getting on the appropriate bus?
Yes, in fact, and, and Mrs. Worsbicky continues to work this evening to make sure all of that data is accurate, considering the changes that we've made, because we do tweak it. If we find that one bus is taking longer, one gets done earlier nearby, we'll change the stop. In that way, we try to make them as even as possible, keep the kids on the bus as short a length of time as, as we can. But that information goes to secretaries and principals, who check it with teachers and with students and things.
Wayne, the reason why I brought this up tonight, because there is major, major concern about the safety of our children. And now that you know, I know you're gonna look into it tomorrow, but we're gonna make, that's all we're gonna do. That's, if you don't hear it from somebody, then you're not gonna know. And I don't want to go to the point of some kid getting hurt, or a bus getting in an accident, and we got kids flying all over the place, and you're not knowing that there's a problem. This way, you know, and then you can look into it tomorrow, and then we can move on to straighten it out.
Well, yeah, so, and, and just to go back to my opening statement before, the safety of our kids is, is the absolute top priority for myself and for all of us at this table.
I believe that.
So, and I want to assure you and, and all of the parents that this has been absolutely a top priority in order for myself, the business manager, the bus company, the principals, the teachers, to make sure that this gets straightened out. So it is, it has already been being worked on, I appreciate hearing the concerns. And I would encourage parents, if they have particular concerns, to please call, call over here, and we can hear about them. But in terms of holding onto poles and standing up, I've not heard that.
I would just say, Jesse's after me. I would, I would just say that, again, if there's a concern, as Dr. Brunel said, the quickest way to have something resolved is to call busing. If you don't, if you don't get anywhere in that office, call Dr. Brunel. But to talk about it with five or six other people, or ten or twelve other people, that's not gonna solve your problem.
Or Facebook.
Well, that's what I'm saying. On Facebook or conversations over the phone, it's not gonna get settled right away. The quickest way to get to the point, if you can't get it done in the office that you're supposed to be calling, is to call Dr. Brunel. And if Dr. Brunel doesn't know about it, then there's nothing she can do about it.
Well, that's why it's being brought up tonight, George. So, she knows and somebody can do something about it.
Well, that's great. I'm glad that you brought it to the table. But I'm saying, she may have known about it yesterday if people had just called her.
If the parents had called her.
Yes, 'cause we had plenty of calls, am I wrong?
We did, oh, we have.
And there were, there were concerns about the delays. There were concerns about the pickups. And as Yaya said, about the non-pickups. There were lots of concerns. But we didn't hear the, we didn't hear the specific, that's so serious, Wayne.
Oh, I know, that's why I had it be tonight, and that's why I brought it up.
That's very serious.
I wanted to thank, just to the point in terms of being able to get through the phone, it was very hard to get, it was pretty signalless to the time. But I don't know if there's a way that we can add something to our phone system for my phone calls? 'Cause I do know I personally drill, I call many times without being able to get through. So, I think that helped a lot of the problems.
Okay.
The newest concern today is that the parent pickup line was so long and it lasted till four o'clock or what have you. The main problem today was that everyone was boycotting the bus because of yesterday. So, now that one was longer. So, now that the buses are running smoothly, people can put their kids back on the bus, including myself. And then the pickup line will be better. And so, I truly feel like people need to put faith in the system. Yesterday was a disaster on many levels. And, but I feel like today was a huge improvement. I witnessed it myself, you know? And I just think that we need to, it will get better every single day. And I know patience is hard to ask for when it's the livelihood of our children. And it's a thousand degrees outside, we're in the middle of some god-awful heat wave. But, I mean, we definitely, it's on the mend. I feel like you guys have really sat down and thought it through. And today, there was definitely organization. And I feel like other problems will resolve itself as time goes on.
Having been someone that has done bus duty in her life for a number of years, I'm just wondering if it would help if when a bus pulled into the schools in the morning, rather than hurry, hurry, hurry the kids off, so it goes to the next school, if someone can check to really see if every kid on that, just step on the bus and look, does everyone have a seat? But also, on the reverse, when they're pulling out, rather than hanging on the bus, someone just outboarded, "Does every child have a seat?" And that would give us instant knowledge of that kind of problem.
Through the chair, I think Dottie was on something with the, some of the buses, not all of them, but some of them do section the kids, where fifth graders are in the back, then fourth, third. So, it may have been a case of a fifth grader who didn't have enough seats, so he was standing, 'cause he knows to stay in the back. And then, you know, you see my five-year-old or my eight-year-old who's sitting there and sees a kid standing and goes home and is like, so, you know, this kid was standing in the aisle.
That's unacceptable. I don't think it's one kid.
The driver needs to tell them, "You don't have to sit in the back, my brothers. You can sit wherever you want," when it gets to that point. It might have been an easy fix like that.
If the teachers even were boarding the buses and they saw it right away, they would take care of that. Just school personnel helping out so we get an eyeball on what's going on on each bus as they come in and as they leave.
Well, I think the superintendent will definitely address it. That's why it was brought up. And I think it will be taken care of.
Absolutely. Dr. Brunel, do you have anything else to add?
I do, just to kind of summarize some things. So, what I can tell you is this. We expect our kids to go through learning processes. And there are gonna be some times that mistakes are gonna be made. But the opportunity is to reflect on it and see what we need to do different. And I think that, you know, while yesterday was not a shining moment, it was for some parents, 'cause some parents got that call and they're like, "It was great. We had no problem on the bus." But there were others who didn't. So, it was unacceptable, and I was very clear on that message. But we use that opportunity to make corrections and move forward. And that's what I think the learning process is all about. I wish yesterday didn't happen. I'm very pleased that the progress today was made, and I think tomorrow will be even better. You know, as we look back and said, you know, what could we or should we have done differently? One of the things, when we knew that they were that late leaving Auburn Middle School, the schools were notified, the three elementary schools. But I should have said to them, "Do it one call. Let the parents know that they're running about forty minutes late." That probably would have alleviated a lot of concern on parents' parts. And that didn't happen, and I regret that that didn't happen. And I apologized to people for it. But, you know, lessons learned. I think improvements are being made. And I think that if people are patient, I will certainly look into all of these issues that by Tuesday, I think we're gonna have very smoothly running buses. That's real.
And I have just one other question, or I guess thank you for comment. It seems like the Auburn Police Department really stepped up and was available for support today, which obviously may have, like you said, a huge improvement. Are we guaranteed their support through the year? Is this just a, so, this isn't until the parents learn what's allowed? Or will we have a school proctor not letting people? I'm just thinking, how do we permanently keep people from going into the bus?
Right. So, actually, at the start of every year, we have, excuse me, support from the Auburn Police. Certainly our school resource officer, but he usually enlists some others to assist as well. We knew here, the new Auburn Middle School, that that was gonna be an area of challenge, as well as Swanson Road. So, they were deployed there yesterday. They'll be with us for the next several days. But we're also using our crossing guards to be sure to help that. But we also need, everybody has a role in this. So, if there are set times, you know, for, say, here at middle school, parents can commit at 2:25 to start picking up kids. And I could not believe how incredibly well the parents of Auburn Middle School followed that rule. There were a couple who tried to get a little early and they were stopped. But ninety-nine percent of them waited until 2:25 came in. The buses had already left. It was smooth and seamless. Everything worked well. We need the parents at Swanson Road and Pakachog to do the same. If there are certain times, don't queue up until then. And the reason for it is not to cause frustration for anybody. It's really to make the system work. You know, because we're moving six hundred children in a very small area, Swanson Road in particular. Even with the improvements in that parking lot, you know, we're right on Swanson Road. There are homes all over. But we will get these issues addressed, and I feel that people will be very confident by next week.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for your comments.
And thank you for all the improvements.
Yes.
It was really so much positive.
It's the whole team, but I will pass that along. Thank you.
And moving on to...
I actually already addressed the return of JB and Mary Dee. So, likely that would come forward probably on the September 23rd. But we'll bring it when we feel confident in the decision, which should be soon. And then finally, in terms of upcoming events, the curriculum nights will soon be starting at the elementary schools in particular. Those are starting, they're great opportunities for families to go. And we've had our open house events where we've had great response from the community and families. But this is really a night to learn, for parents to learn more about the curriculum that's being offered. So, I encourage them, even if they went to an open house already, to go and visit that, to attend those programs as well. With the one for Auburn High concluding on the 24th.
And nothing under business and financial?
We don't.
Nothing under policies or job descriptions?
Correct.
And we do not need to go into executive session?
Correct.
We don't?
No.
Okay. I thought we would, but we don't, we don't.
No, we don't need a little bit more time.
Okay.
New business, I'm sorry.
Back to new business.
Back to new business.
Also included, at your seat this evening, it did not go out to you directly, but this was actually, it includes an email from Dr. Sawyer, who is the superintendent of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. And I believe I had made you aware or shared with you in correspondence that there is a proposal to put a charter school in Shrewsbury. And what is at the top of this is a letter that I believe tonight in Shrewsbury, they were gonna be taking up at their school committee meeting. And it is a letter being sent to the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Chester. It's Mr., Dr. Sawyer's understanding that the commissioner will be deciding on Friday of this week whether to advance this proposal to the next level. As noted in here, and I know that you've not had the opportunity to review through it, but they are proposing a biotechnology, I believe is what they are calling it, charter school. As noted in Dr. Sawyer's comments, he feels, and I would concur with him in terms of the Auburn Public Schools, that we offer a great program here in our schools, the STEM Academy that we have at Auburn Middle School, the iPad initiative, the offerings that we have here. And they are speaking out to say to Commissioner Chester, "We advocate that you not propose this." Their concern is that with this charter school, it could draw students, particularly it being in Shrewsbury, from Shrewsbury, but it would be also open to Auburn as well. And that it could draw much-needed dollars that we've invested in the Auburn community that would follow that child to the charter school. So, he is proposing, they're gonna be sending this letter. So, I share it with you. I know it's new business, it just came through today, to see if you had any feeling on it or if you wished that I send a letter to the commissioner on behalf of the Auburn Public Schools as well, whether it be in favor or is the Shrewsbury school system is likely to do opposed to it.
My opinion would be opposed to that charter school. If we need the additional biotech programs, they should take place right here in Auburn. I'm confident that that's something that we could build. And if we had the funding to do so, then that would be the route that I would like to see.
I agree with George.
As it is, we've got students going to regional schools. And they're already busting at the seams. And what's happening there is students aren't allowed to get into those schools. The charter school's gonna fill up. So, the students that want the biotech will not be able to get into that biotech school once that fills up. If we keep everything in-house, if that's a route that we wanna go with biotech, then we'll make sure that our students are prepared for that. Any other comments or...
I agree with you one hundred percent, George. I mean, I've looked into charter schools my whole career, and I'm just not in favor of them. I think they take needed dollars from the public schools. And I think sometimes they take, they like to say, in my experience, I've seen students come back from charter schools that need extra services that they don't seem to be willing to provide. And to me, if you're gonna take students, you need to take a sampling of everybody. And I don't feel they always do that. So, I'm definitely against charter schools.
I would agree with that opinion.
I agree as well, just given how much we've actually invested in our own middle learning middle school. We have such a great platform here.
Just a question. Do you think we should recommend drawing up a letter or something?
That was gonna be based on, I didn't know if Mrs. Harrington had any commentary?
I agree, yeah, no, I definitely would oppose.
So, what I would propose, if someone made a motion to ask me to draft a letter that's in opposition and draft it to Commissioner Chester, this being so time-sensitive, I would certainly share a copy of it with you. But I would sign with your permission on behalf of the school committee and indicate if you decided to make a motion and take a vote that this was unanimously supported by the Auburn School Committee and send it along, because it appears he's gonna needs to have it by Friday.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Absolutely.
Missable.
Great. I will do that, I will share it.
Can you put in the letter unanimously?
Yes, I will.
Since everybody voted on it?
Very strongly unanimously.
That's why I wanna put in there, so. And I would...
Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is vote. Good night, everyone.